One little thing that we forgot to let Sam tell you about his company.
Yeah, thank you very much. Obviously, I know that you have met with Richard in the past, but another worthy development partner, I thought I would just tell you a little bit about TWG Development, our company. We are based in Indianapolis, Indiana, and we're started in 2007. Since that time, we've done forty-five developments in four states, thirty-five of which are light tech affordable projects. We have another twelve in the pipeline, nine of which are also light tech projects. That's really our bread and butter is the light tech affordable housing deals. So of those thirty-five projects, sorry, eight of them have been school conversions, and another twelve of them have been warehouse conversions. So we are very familiar with this kind of project. We have seventy-five years of development experience across the four different sort of product types, but then again affordable is our bread and butter. The next page is our current Iowa projects, which pretty much run the spectrum, one more, I pretty much run the spectrum of our product types. We have the Commonwealth Senior Apartments, the Cedar Rapids, that was a rehab of an older apartment building, eighty-four units. It's a light tech deal. It opens later this year. Blair's Ferry Senior Apartments, which is in Marion, which is just outside of Cedar Rapids, sixty units. Also, a new construction, sixty units, also a nine percent tax credit project, and opens up in 2016. And then the RNT Lost Building in Des Moines, which was the former Des Moines Register Newspaper Building. It's an adaptive reuse project. I'm sorry, I like the Apollo Building would be, one hundred eighty-four units. We use the federal state historic tax credits. That also opens in 2016. As a company, we really like the state of Iowa. We think it's a great, great market, and it's a main focus of ours. We are very excited about this project.
What is the relationship between Landover and TWG?
We'll be co-developing.
Co-developing on this.
Co-develop.
Co-develop.
Yes.
Are you guys buddies?
John Sullivan is not here, however.
We've done a few projects, absolutely.
TWG is the eleventh largest affordable housing developer in the country.
Oh, thank you, yes. Yes, absolutely. I forgot that. Thank you very much.
Excellent representation.
Well, my neighbor told me to tell you guys to get her done. That was her word.
We'd love to.
She said she doesn't know where that came from, but she heard somebody say that, so get her done.
We'd like to do that.
And then this last page is just some more of our projects that we've done over time.
And I also have to say that we went through the building again today, I've been through it a couple times now, but this is a challenging building.
Yeah, yes.
This is not your normal warehouse, where you just knock out the walls and build apartments. This is a whole different thing, and TWG has had a lot of experience in doing kind of complicated rehabs, which I have not, by the way. So I think it's a very, very good fit.
Well, if you guys can get that to working right, I got a project for you after that, so you can get some hair on top of this head. We'll talk about it.
Okay. So we have submitted a letter, a proposal to acquire the property, and as you can see from the timing here, we have applications due November fourth. By November fourth, we have to be able to have full architectural plans, full site plans. We have to have all our financing lined up and everything. We don't have a lot of time, so we need you, if you're willing to sell us the property, we need that to happen very quickly.
You guys good?
There's only, there's one about the earnest money. The last time we did a project, and the project failed, and we refunded the earnest money, we got a lot of heat from the community on that. So that's a little tough for me to say, yeah, you've got the earnest money, but it's going to be refundable if you back out. But that...
If we back out, if you don't get funded?
Yeah.
If we can't get financing, it'd be just like you're buying a house, and you're going to get a mortgage on your property and put up mortgages.
I've got no problem with that.
If you don't get your house, if you don't get financing, you generally get earnest money.
On this deal, I have no problem with that.
Counsel?
I have no further questions at this time, but I reserve the right to question at a later date.
Well, they're under a timeline. We need to...
Are you guys okay, yeah, are you guys okay with their proposal?
What's next?
We'd have to talk to, this is a TIF project, so it has to go, and a land sale, both. And so there are several steps that need to be done that we would have to rely on our bonding attorney to Bob Jostens to make sure that we did the right steps in the right order and what had to be done. And if you wanted to move forward or proceed with it, we need to be in contact with him to find out what we need to take for action. The request that's in here is significantly more than what you've done on any other project. Really, the only difference between this and the previous, well, there's two differences in the terms on this versus what you had presented earlier this spring. The purchase price on the previous agreement from Miller Valentine was listed as fifty thousand. They also asked for that fifteen-year TIF rebate, property tax rebate. This one asks in addition, that additional two hundred thousand on top of a fifteen-year TIF rebate. So this is, well, this is a step beyond where you were at for consideration before, and that's really, what is the relative worth for you as a counsel? If that's something that you want to say is, that you're comfortable at least considering through this process, then that would be what we...
I think this is, the proposal we made in the letter is almost exactly what we proposed in the Soler School.
You didn't, you got the two, you asked for the funds, but you weren't getting anything beyond on our tax abatement. You're getting the tax abatement that was in place, which was the ten-year. It was seven years, hundred percent, then seventy-five percent, fifty percent, twenty-five percent abatement schedule. This is asking for significantly more than what you're asking for in that other proposal.
Well, as you know, Jim, in order to get financing on this thing, basically, the state sets out the parameters, and it has to do with something we call community contribution. And that's the number that we have to achieve. How we get there, I think, is really, you know, I know we went round and round about on this in Soler School.
You need a seven percent match?
I think we need seven percent.
To fully capture that. On a ten million dollar project, you need seven hundred thousand.
And I think that we came up with it last time, by having, it's a combination of tax abatement and the...
What are you estimating is your annual property tax on this?
We haven't done it yet.
This seems like you're going to be well over seven percent the way you have this structured.
Well, we don't need over seven percent.
Okay, well, that's...
We only need whatever the acquirers need.
That's where, this is the first that we've seen anything from staff, too, but it makes sense, and that's kind of where we've gone with the other proposals, where we've tried to make sure that we structured a package that was going to get you through that seven percent. And that's where I can feel comfortable with presenting something to counsel. If you're willing to work with us on getting to that.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to hear.
You guys good with that?
And then we'll work with Bob Jostens to get this back to you as soon as we can with the next step.
Sounds good.
All right, guys.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It'd be nice to see them go through. U.S. Bank Parking and Parking Lot Swap.
Well, there's a memo in your packet, kind of discussing a couple items here, one being potential lot exchange between the city of Burlington and Frank Millard Company, and then the second, trying to continue to meet our U.S. Bank lease provisions of granting them eighteen reserved parking spaces, having some of those be on-street if kind of the lot sale or switch is something we move forward with, with some of those also being reserved in the parking lot across the street. So just, this is an older map, but a quick context to what we're looking at here. I think there's a map in your packet as well, but currently with the U.S. Bank, they have, they lease the bank and this parking lot from the city of Burlington. In the lease agreement, the city was to provide them eighteen reserved parking spaces. So this property is currently under ownership of the city of Burlington. Frank Millard Company owns this building here at the south end of our Main and Valley parking lot. And as they're constructing their building on Main Street, one of their desires or feelings is this might be one of the few opportunities to expand their building and construct something that might fit them more so into the future. It may not be a need right now, but as they're building, something that would make sense down the road as well. So kind of what we've seen in the past was their building with their parking on the south side, and then the city parking, U.S. Bank parking on the north side, having this building come off in the middle of the, within the middle of the block. What they proposed as an option would line up the building on Valley Street equal to the building to the east, and then add in angle parking in front of that parking lot. There's currently angle parking to the east of the alley that had been vacated and D to two Frank Millard as well. This would add in eleven angle parking spots. I believe there's three parallel parking spots there now. So would add quite a few spots to this. And then the city currently has five parking spots in their lot just to the south of the U.S. Bank building, that we could make an arrangement to provide those spots and then reserve some of these on-street spots for the U.S. Bank use during business hours. Couple of things looking at it, the lots are similar size, assessed values. Looking long-term, it did talk in our parking study about the potential use of these buildings on the south side of our existing parking lot as a future expansion area, at least contemplated it for this parking area. Would potentially allow future construction of a parking ramp in this area with the additional space if that were ever decided to be in need in this area as well. So we do see some benefit to both the city and Frank Millard Company at this time for, I guess, construction and expansion of their building, lining it up with Valley and Main Street, having continuous line there. Also, the potential for additional parking to the city of Burlington in one lot, where we're maintaining one lot with the potential for construction of a parking ramp if there is a need in this area down the road. Makes more sense to have a larger area. So that's kind of the proposal being brought forward, as one being a land sale between the two entities, similar-sized lots, similar use. One provision would be the buildings would have to be demolished as a condition of sale to the city of Burlington, so that we're acquiring a lot, not buildings. And then, secondly, is having a limited term on-street reserved parking for U.S. Bank during their business hours to, so we're able to maintain their lease provisions.
As we worked through this request that we got, there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefit for the city just in terms of the little bit more flexibility with the larger footprint parking lot area. We did, as we talked about it, we did note that having a building is not the same relative worth as having a parking lot. For us, in terms of maintaining parking spots, it's hard to park on a building. So they did agree to provide a lot that had been raised, not repaved, and to some extent, that is an okay thing from our side. As we take on that new lot, and we have to figure out how we're going to accommodate that additional space, we'll have to have some decisions made as to whether we, like with the bump out, the concrete bump out in the center of the existing lot, or do we extend that farther? Do we look at this as a time where you talk about potentially having it be a ramp over the, you know, there's some extra decisions that need to be done anyway, as we try to figure out how we incorporate that lot into our existing parking lot there. Given that the timing on this, they're wanting to get this building built, yet this construction cycle, they're not looking to get, they'd like to see not demoing that other lot or other building until next year. With that kind of a timeframe in there, we do have to, since we did have the agreement with U.S. Bank while they're still downtown, to maintain their eighteen spots, we have to accommodate, as part of this process, we do have to accommodate those eighteen spots. We've had five spots open in that other lot. We've left them open purposefully, not re-rented them, knowing that this was being talked about so we can cover a portion of those. U.S. Bank has expressed a willingness to work with us on having the other thirteen spots be on-street parking. This is not something that we have done before, where we, and we don't want to be in the long-term business of reserving on-street parking for a specific business, but it is part of a process. We have a purpose for why we are doing this, and it's for a limited time. It's while U.S. Bank is in the building until we are able to use it for the police department.
Weren't we counting on that lot to be some use for the police department?
That still would be. We'd still, within that lot then, to the, now is a larger lot, we will make sure that we still reserve that same amount of space for parking for the PD. And it may, we'll have to see how we, as time goes on, how we configure that lot, and which spots we identify are theirs, but we'd still be maintaining that amount of space for them.
So if Frank Millard kept that property, would they still tear down that building? I'm just...
Yeah. Part of our agreement is that we would, at our expense, tear the buildings down that we are swapping. And so we would, so you would have a vacant lot for a vacant lot.
Right.
So, I mean, for us, you know, it's, dollar-wise, it's not an equal trade.
No.
Right.
But to, for the benefit of being able to, you know, we don't actually need the space, but for, to be able to build a building that faces Valley Street that matches the front of our building, which we would brick and put the windows in to match our building. You know, it's a one-time chance to do it is now for us, because if we go ahead and build our building like we're originally going to do, then we've got that parking lot there, and it's not going to be as attractive, you know, from the street as what it would be if we could do it. So that's where we kind of came up with, you know, trying to figure out how we can, we've been talking about this for quite some time, trying to figure out how we could, you know, make something work. You know, I've basically been trying to buy a lot from U.S. Bank before the city even came into play, or maybe not before, but when there wasn't even the interest. And then when, and they always said they would sell it to me, but they thought they needed it as a marketing, as a, you know, to market their building, they would need it, and so they wouldn't give it up. And then when the, when then the police station decided to go in and that deal came together, that's when then I started approaching the city, you know, is there some way we can buy this from you? Because, you know, do you need the space or do you not? We didn't know.
Right.
And then it was kind of, no, we need the space. And then we came up with, hey, we own the property next to your city lot, which at some point, you're probably going to want to buy and expand that lot, you know, some point in history. I mean, you're going to want to expand that parking lot, and it's going to be a lot cheaper to do it the way we're doing it now than to have to come buy that from me or someone else down the road. So it kind of, to me, is a win-win for everyone, and that's where our proposal came from.
Did you say you would tear down a building?
No, the, well, the building, there's two buildings there where, where you see the main Valley parking lot. Right here is, right there is the buildings. There's a building there, and that's the lot that we own, or it's a building. And so in our agreement, we will, at our expense, tear those buildings down to flat ground, not build it into a parking lot, but take it down. And then, you know, you would probably, wouldn't even do anything with that for a couple of years until, until, you know, you got, until the bank left, anyway.
Right, yeah.
What about the mural?
That's the loss, and that's what was pointed out in the email you got from Steve Freevert this afternoon, just pointing out that that is a significant mural, and that's one of the things that is a consequence.
You know, I would, you know, the mural's nice, but, you know, it, I could probably paint the building if I wanted, you know, so, and I wouldn't, but, you know, I think that is, you know, it's an issue, but the, you know, the buildings, it probably would be more use, and they could paint a mural on another building. So, anyway, I don't want to get into that.
No, I just wanted to bring light to that.
Honestly, the first time I heard this proposal, I thought, this is a good idea. I like it.
So is everybody good with it? This has been a plan for a long, long time. It's just never come to this point where it can be executed. I think it's important that we move forward with it. And I think, I'm, I think the timing is so good on this for all concerned.
I was glad you're thinking this.
Max's building that he's putting up is going to be incredible. I think it's a good move, like he said, for all concerned. It's a win-win. It's sad to lose a piece of work.
Well, I think it's going to make that part of downtown, especially that corner, you know, look pretty nice, you know, even though part of it's going to be almost, you know, like our other part.
Sure.
But it still looks probably better than it did.
For sure. And the temporary on-street thing, I'm fine with that, too. That's only going to be for a year or less.
Okay.
What we would, we'll be working on then, we'll, I think we can have it on for Monday's, next Monday's meeting, at least the first step in the process, but what it'll be is it's a land swap.
It'd be a set date for sale. I think we'd do a sale with what the return is.
Yeah, and what we have to do is, we'll have essentially kind of a statement of findings in regards to the relative value of the two lots. They are, it is a sale, but we're using a swap to accomplish the sale. And there's a specific process. It's a little bit different than our typical bidding process when we're getting rid of vacant housing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll be a set date.
Set date.
So it'll be the September meeting.
Okay.
Last discussion item is POP unit update.
Do you want to do this now or another section later? It's up to you folks, or you want to do it?
How long, how long's it going to take?
Fifteen, POP, fifteen minutes.
Well, I don't want to rush through it either.
It's, you won't be rushed to do it.
No, I just wanted to write, not David, I wanted to throw that out there. I didn't know if you were going to...
I'm fine. Much as they could pay us, it should take an hour or two. With all they're paying us, it should take an hour or two.
All right. As long as I'm not late to the wedding, man.
Yee-hoo. Say that again.
Stephanie, do you want to switch over to?
Oh, good evening. I just thought it was important that, I mean, once we put the grant together, and we got, we got, got the grant, and we finally got the unit up and running, they've been running since about May first, or the first week of May, anyway. I just thought it was important to bring to you an update. Well, what have we done in four months with the unit, and what have they accomplished? So that's what we're going to talk about here a little bit. So, and I got this broke down. I just want to give you a summary slide on the arrests, and we're talking, we're going to talk about warrant arrests, onsite arrests, the weapons that we seized that include handguns, knives, narcotics seizures, the community events that they're participating in. It's a real big part of this program. Training, what have we did to provide them with the training or the tools necessary to do this job? And then some interdepartmental assistance, some things that they've been able to do to help other divisions within our department. Now keep in mind, as I go through this, I am really confident that ninety or ninety-five percent of these efforts wouldn't have happened. This is a proactive unit, and they have an opportunity to go out and do these things that other patrolmen don't have an opportunity because they're answering radio calls, call to call to call to call. So keep that in mind as we go through, because I think that's really significant. So we've had twenty-two misdemeanor arrests. These are warrant arrests, warrants that are issued by the court. And we get these new warrants every day down at the station, and they can be anything from failure to appear to crimes that were committed that we did work on, filed an affidavit with the court, and got a warrant issued. So some of those examples that includes, of those twenty-two arrests were serious assault, criminal mischief, child endangerment, assault with a dangerous weapon, sex abuse, and probation violation. Seven felony arrests, warrant arrests, and some of these that escaped from custody, some burglaries, sex abuse second, and it should say second-degree theft and sex abuse in the second degree. And those are felony offenses, because some of the burglaries are actually misdemeanors in today's world, and some of the sex abuse can be up to an aggravated misdemeanor. So I wanted to clarify that those are very serious offenses in those categories. Then some onsite felony arrests. In other words, these are things that are going on as they're working or in their daily, as they're out to maybe look for somebody or whatever we've assigned them to do. And we've had possession of a firearm by a felon, possession with intent to deliver methamphetamine, and threats to commit arson. I mean, those are some really, really serious offenses that were dealt with, that we can only hope and pray really did prevent something very serious from happening.
Mm-hmm.
So in this amount of time, they've, they've actually seized four handguns. They've taken these handguns off the streets, and this could have been anything from traffic stops to search warrants to any other activities they're involved in. And the Ruger LCP is a light carry pistol. It's a .380 pistol. It's very concealable. It's a small pistol. The LC-9 is a little bit bigger, similar to the Glock, but it's in the nine millimeter. It's also made by Ruger. A MAC-9 pistol, again, is very, very similar to the Ruger LC-9, and a High Point .380, which is a little bit bigger than the light carry pistol, but of the same caliber, .380. Again, all these guns are really concealable. They seized a shotgun and two knives, and both of these knives were involved in some real serious assaults, so I just described those out there a little bit. And these are just by type, instead of just actual amounts and going through all that data, but they've seized methamphetamine, they seized morphine, Xanax, and marijuana, so...
Morphine?
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty common. It's pretty common, unfortunately. It's out there. So this is another part that is really, really important with the POP unit, and it's how they're involving in community policing to solve problems. And we're all-in with getting kids involved. I mean, we're deep into after-school programming, and everything we're trying to do is get associated with these kids and build this rapport. So over the course of time, I really think this is going to have a big impact on what we're trying to do in the community. So every week out at Stone Gardens, they have what they call B-Town Block Parties, and that's where you've probably seen the video of one guy can actually dance, and the other one really's got some work to do, kind of like me, probably. But that's what they're doing out there. They're out there, and they're trying to spend some time socializing with the kids. They're hanging out, and we're giving out stickers and coloring books and safety materials, and just being in those neighborhoods as much as we can be. And again, this is no way a patrolman on duty right now would ever have time to do these things. So it's a, it's a big deal. I've asked if they go down to the farmer's market. It's a different demographic, but yet it's still people in our community that are down there trying to enjoy themselves and build rapport down there as well. Friday Fest, Steamboat Day, just some examples, but they're spending hours and hours trying to build this rapport, and it's all part of this problem-solving process. I mean, first, we've got to know about the problem and identify the problem before we can figure out a solution. So I'm really proud of them with what they've accomplished with that. And so as the unit was forming, and we were getting them going, we decided, well, how are we going to do this? Well, let's go to some of the top places that have been doing it a long time and really know what they were doing. So I called around to some fellow chiefs across the state, and I sent out some things on a, we have a forum website where you can send out some questions. And so I did, and I kind of figured out that the Ames Police Department and Cedar Rapids Police Department here locally were probably some of the best programs in the state. So we sent them up there, some shadowing opportunities, go up there and work with these guys for a few days, figure out what they're doing, how they're doing it, and bring it back to us. And with that said, we also sent them down to the Illinois State Police in East St. Louis. Tough place, tough, tough place. But here's what they... But here's what they brought back from East St. Louis that unfortunately, we, we don't have the manpower for, but they'd actually spend the first couple hours before they even hit the streets on social media. They had profiles set up, and what they learned is kinda what drove them to go that day. I mean, as we look back to some of the violent crime we've had in our community, as we get to investigating that, and as we get to serving subpoenas and have access to these social sites that we didn't have access to, you can see all this coming, you can see the threats, you can see all this building steam, and so that's what they were doing, they figured out a way to pipeline into that social network and see some of that aggravation, or see some of these rifts that are starting, and maybe get out there and stop it before it happens. But, again, with that said, we're talking about two guys that I don't think without additional personnel, we would have time to sit there and set up these sites and, and do those things, but futuristically, as we look into the future, I think that that's something that we, as a community, as a department, as a council, really need to consider. And that's a, an additional unit at the police department that could be staffed by civilians, but strictly to deal with cybercrime and cyber incidents. It's, it's a whole nother world out there. I mean, I've been fortunate to talk to Rob Sessman, and he's kinda, he's kinda provided me with some very helpful information on some of the different sites that are available that are unfamiliar to us, there is an underground world out there that's, that's really incredible. So, just kinda put that in the back of your mind and think about it, I think that, as, again, as we move forward, those are, there's gonna be key things to stay on top of what's going on. I mean, we all know it, these kids, they're just doing this all day, every day, all day, every day, so we gotta have somehow maybe some access to that when it comes to something violent. So, that's what we did to kinda get them up and running or provide them some training. And you know, the investigation we've been doing out at Lake West, thanks again to Don and his crew and everything he did for us to draw that lake down, but they were able to provide assistance in those searches, I mean, Ryan Smith, you know how hard he's been working on the K-9 thing, well, he had access to these cadaver dogs and set that up for us, and got that going out there, and they've also assisted with the task force and, like, when they're out doing controlled by search warrants, they're gaining that experience, you know, and, and building some of those networks as to who's who in the zoo, and, and how's that, all that drug networking happening in the community, and who do we need to be focusing on and who, who we don't need to be focusing on. So, that was just another key thing I thought I'd throw out there that, again, some things that wouldn't have happened from just the patrol division to those other divisions. And so I think that's about it, got it wrapped up. Any questions about us, just kind of a real quick overview of, of what they've been up to, but in four months, I think they've got, they're, they're on the right track.
Sounds great.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, it's just I've, you know, I've seen them down at the farmer's market, which I thought was interesting, just 'cause I've been on a ride along, and it was call to call to call, you know, there was no sitting and, you know, looking for things, so it was kinda neat to see them out, not patrolling or not being on a call, so I think it's really beneficial for us to have this unit.
I couldn't agree more, it's, it's incredibly beneficial. I mean, the opportunity to talk to people on a, a different level where they're not so hurried, a hurried conversation.
Right, and also to have a positive interaction with the police officer, not, I'm being pulled over, or I'm getting a ticket, or, you know, my parents are being arrested.
Everything that we do, that's exactly right.
It's really important to have that.
Thanks for your support on that, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric.
Uh, who wants to do the radio show tomorrow? Are we doing it?
I thought, that's what you said, did I make that up?
No, no, we're doing the radio show tomorrow.
Wednesday.
I mean, Wednesday, yes.
I thought you said that at the baseball game.
I, I may have, sorry, I, my mind's. Okay, uh, let's close out, Mr. Tisland, do you have anything? Hannah, you got anything?
Just that, you know, the softball game went amazing on Saturday, and I don't know if, when we're gonna have a tally of what they were able to raise, hopefully soon, we'll know.
Yeah, I think we'll be further than, or Kale said he'd get ahold of us, he kinda liked it, have a little presentation maybe to count or something, I don't know, yeah, it won't take long.
That'd be great, I, I know I heard the estimate was a lot more than maybe what you thought it was gonna be. It was just really neat to see everyone out there and how they all interacted, and it was a lot of fun, that's it, thank you.
Kim Scott.
Took my thunder. I, I went to the games, I went to the games too, they were, they were good, the, the play was awesome, I, I, I don't mean it was good, I mean it was awesome. I, I seen some moves that I'd never seen. I seen some throws like I've never seen before.
I think a lot of people made.
It was, it was good, it was fun. I was out there, I gave out the last of my, my light bulbs, while I was there, I collected two hundred dollars in donations, people just dropping it in the box like it was a slot machine or something, so, I, I felt good, I turned that over to, to Kale for his, his project, and Kale Heitmeyer is the kid that put this thing together, he's a young man, he done a tremendous job, he was running all different directions all the time and played in one of the games. I don't know how he done it, but he was, you know, when it was, when the, when the fighters were at bat, he was out running around barking off orders and then running back onto the field to play, so he just, he done a great job. But also, Chief, I've given out my last blue light, I'm, I'm out of blue lights, so I wanna give you this, it's an additional three hundred dollars that people have donated to the K-9 unit, and, so I, I think we done pretty well, six hundred and sixty.
Fantastic.
It was fun, an exercise.
Anything else?
That's it.
I just want to, I was there, it was a great day, I wanna thank Tim Scott for setting up the, setting up the table with the blue lights, I thought that was phenomenal, good, good job on that. Just wanna give a shout-out again to Kale Heitmeyer for his hard work, and also to Ryan Smith, who did, uh, worked really hard in concert with that to help get a lot of things done. Also wanna give a shout-out to Jeff McGee, who we had an opportunity to go spend some time with him, he retired from the, from the armed forces, but he's still saving lives in Burlington, so we appreciate having him, and that's all I had, Mayor Proton.
I'm done.
I'm done.
City manager. Oh, I also had the opportunity, I went to the Capitol Theater this morning, and some of the kids that read books at the library over the summer, they all got to collect a certificate for going there, and I was, I didn't go stay for the whole thing, I left right toward the end, but they announced all the kids, and it was about, I don't know how many they were, and then they got to Jim Furno.
Half of the kids were Furno.
That was the rest of the kids in there, so I kinda rolled out while they were cycling through all forty thousand of them, but anyways, it was a good day.
I knew that was coming. Thanks much. You know, I didn't see any, I, I didn't see all of the games, I, I missed the firefighter wearing his uniform up at the podium.
It was awesome.
It was Michael Forten from Danville Fire Department. He had, he had people from all over the area involved, it was just a neat day. My favorite comment from tonight, Chief is fortunate to, to have a chance to talk to Rob Sessman.
Glad you caught that.
So, I, I thought that was a, a great deal.
Sessman.
Thanks, Mr. Sessman, and I don't have anything else.
All right.
Thank you, Council.
Bob, what should we do?